Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of January 8th, 2019. Madam Clerk, will you call the floor?
Councilmember Beerman. Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Castleberry.
I'm here.
Councilmember Hickman.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am also here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Sure.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council by unanimous consent can designate those meeting agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items four through forty-six with the exception of item forty-five on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number four. Minutes of October sixteenth, City Council Conference Minutes, City Council Study Session Minutes of November sixth, City Council Special Session Minutes of November twentieth, and City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. Item five is an ordinance upon first reading rezoning property located at fourteen fourteen George Avenue from our one single-family dwelling unit to a spud, simple planned unit development district. Item six is an ordinance upon first reading closing a portion of a platted ten-foot utility easement located in the Renaissance Edition at sixteen Anne Braden Boulevard. Item seven is an ordinance upon first reading rezoning property located at forty-one thirty-one thirty-sixth Avenue Southeast from A two Rural Agricultural to a P U D Planned Unit Development District. Item eight is an ordinance upon first reading closing a portion of a utility easement located on Lot One, Block Two, Grandview Estates, North Edition, Number Two. Item nine is an ordinance upon first reading to grant special use for an agri wedding event venue in A two Rural Agricultural District for property located at forty-seven oh one North Porter Avenue. Item ten is an ordinance upon first reading authorizing the calling and holding of a special election on April second to submit to voters the question of the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed seventy-two thousand, I mean seventy-two million, three hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars to be issued in series to provide funds to construct, widen, and improve streets and bridges to be completed with or without the use of other funds and levying and collecting an annual tax upon all the taxable property for payment of interest and principal on bonds and declaring an emergency. Item eleven is an ordinance upon first reading authorizing the calling and holding of a special election on April second, two thousand and nineteen, to submit to voters the question of the issuance of a general obligation limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed sixty million dollars to be issued in series to provide funds for the purpose of economic and community development to include constructing, improving, and equipping stormwater drainage facilities, all to be completed with or without the use of other funds and levying and collecting an annual tax upon all the taxable property for the payment for the payment of interest and principles provided. However, that in no event shall the real and personable, personal taxable property be subject to a special tax in excess of five mils on the dollar for all bonds issued and declaring an emergency. Item twelve is an ordinance upon first reading adding section twenty-one one eighteen of the city code contingent on voter approval of ordinance zero eighteen nineteen dash twenty-eight, establishing a monthly rate to fund a stormwater utility of three dollars for a residential property with a living area less than or equal to eleven hundred and ninety-six square feet, six dollars for a residential property with a living area of one thousand one hundred and ninety-seven feet to one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three square feet, nine dollars for a residential property with a living area greater than one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three square feet, providing for a thirty percent reduction for qualifying low-income residents, twelve dollars for non-residential property that has a parcel area that is less than point six-three acres, forty-five dollars for a non-residential property that has a parcel acre between point six-three and two-point-eleven acres, eighty dollars for a non-residential property that has a parcel area between two-point-one-two acre and thirteen-point-nine-seven acres, and a hundred and sixty dollars for a non-residential property with parcel area exceeding thirteen-point-ninety-seven acres. Changing and amending code sections to add stormwater utility providing an administrative appeals process for a particular parcel and penalties for violations, and providing an effective date for rates subject to voter approval and declaring an emergency. Item thirteen is an ordinance upon first reading authorizing the calling and holding of a special election on April second, two thousand and nineteen, submit to the registered voters the question of approving or rejecting ordinance zero eighteen nineteen dash twenty-seven, which adds section twenty-one one eighteen contingent on voter approval of ordinance zero eighteen nineteen dash twenty-eight, establishing the monthly rates to fund a stormwater utility of three dollars for a residential property with a living area less than or equal to one hundred, one thousand one hundred and ninety-six square feet, six dollars for a residential property with a living area of one thousand one hundred and ninety-seven to one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three square feet, nine dollars for a residential property with a living area greater than one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three square feet, providing a thirty percent reduction in rate for qualifying low-income residents, twelve dollars for a non-residential property that has a parcel rate that is less than zero-point-six-three acres. And it continues with the same language that you had on item thirteen. Do I need to read the very end part? That's fine. Item thirteen B is an ordinance closing a twenty-foot and ten-foot utility easement located in Lot One, Block One, Normandy Acres, second subdivision, which is twenty-five-twenty West Main. Item fourteen is consideration of the appointment of Catherine Walker as interim city attorney. Item fifteen is consideration of the finance director's investment report as of November thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Item sixteen is consideration of a monthly departmental report for the month of November two thousand and eighteen. Item seventeen is consideration of the city manager's change order report. Item eighteen is a bid approval of a contract with Central Contracting Services in the amount of sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars associated and associated bonds for the Lakehurst Drive Drainage Improvement Project and adoption of a tax-exempt status resolution. Item nineteen is a bid for the purchase of salt for the water treatment facility. And item twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six are all purchase of different chemicals for the water treatment plant. Item twenty-seven is an easement, which is an acceptance of a permanent sanitary sewer easement donated by Breck Turkington for the sewer maintenance project F Y E two thousand and fourteen. Item twenty-eight is a Norman's Rural Certificate of Survey for Barefoot Meadows with a variance in the minimum acreage requirement for Lot One and acceptance of easements, two easements generally located on the south side of East Robinson Street, approximately one-half mile east of Seventy-second Avenue. Item twenty-nine is a donation of ten thousand dollars from the Antioch Community Church to be used by the Social and Voluntary Services Commission to help their mission of changing lives and making a difference for the less fortunate and a budget appropriation. Item thirty is a special claim submitted by Brahms in the amount of three thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-five cents for damage to a metal overhang canopy as a result of an incident with the Parks Department's vehicle carrying a dumpster at one thousand two twenty-fourth Avenue Southwest. Item thirty-one is the acceptance of a sub-grantee award in the amount of sixty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from the Oklahoma Office of Homeland Security and assigned back to the State of Oklahoma Department of Public Safety and the Office of Homeland Security to purchase a replacement hazardous materials chemical identification unit for the Norman Fire Department and the approval of a contract. Item thirty-two is change order number three to a contract with M T Z Construction decreasing the contract amount by seven thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents for a revised contract amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, twenty-three dollars and ten cents for the F Y E two thousand and eighteen concrete sidewalk projects and final acceptance of the project. Item thirty-three is a change order with Rudy Construction Company increasing the contract amount by eleven thousand fifty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents for revised contract amount of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-five cents for the Main Street paving project from Jones to Porter and final acceptance of the project and budget transfer between project accounts. Item thirty-four is a change order with M T Z Construction increasing the account, the amount by twenty-nine thousand, eighty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents for a revised contract amount of eleven, a hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty, a hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-nine cents for the Burlington Drive Drainage Improvement Project. Item thirty-five is a contract with Pittsor Lawn Management in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars to provide lawn care for Legacy Park. Item thirty-six is a contract with Integrity Energy Partners in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to provide investigation into the possibility of selling the Gester BioGas and budget appropriation from the Water Reclamation Fund balance. Item thirty-seven is a dockless scooter revocable license agreement with bird rides in the amount of three hundred dollars per year, allowing deployment of no more than a hundred and fifty dockless scooters with the public rights of way, providing for administrative fleet size increases and decreases and providing for rental or for penalties in the event of default or violation of parking parameters. Item thirty-eight is the same agreement with Gotcha Mobility. Item thirty-nine is the same agreement with Neutron Holdings. And that is all the dockless scooter agreements. Item forty is a resolution establishing and appointing a census complete count committee to develop and implement the two thousand and twenty census plan of action for Norman. Item forty-one is a resolution establishing procedures allowing building permit fees charged to be adjusted and satisfied as an incentive for residential homes achieving certain home energy rating systems, which is the HERS rating, and continuing the pilot program established in R seventeen eighteen dash one-one-seven through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Item forty-two is a resolution appropriating forty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars from the sanitation fund balance to purchase one pickup truck for the sanitation division to replace a truck stolen from the Norman Transfer Station. Item forty-three is a resolution authorizing compromise settlement of claims filed by William Atterbury in a workers' compensation commission case. Item forty-four is resolution appointing Marion Hutchinson as the Director of the Regional Transportation Authority of Central Oklahoma to represent Norman. Item forty-five has been removed from the consent docket. Item forty-six, city attorney's recommendation that city council approve a settlement of Robert Forrest Green versus the City of Norman, Oklahoma Court of Civil Appeals Court case in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments from the council regarding any items? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Item forty-five is a resolution establishing a charter review commission for the purpose of conducting a targeted review of the Norman City Charter and to report its findings to the city council. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
At this time, I would like to recognize Catherine Walker.
Thank you. This item comes to council after a discussion in October. You all recall that that original discussion included a discussion about language, adding language to the charter related to the city auditor and city attorney positions, and we provided some draft language at that time. During that discussion, council expressed a consensus to move those two recommendations to a charter review commission and open it up for other suggestions, and so we've received several suggestions since that time. Another part of that discussion was whether we reinstitute the charter review commission that we had last time or whether we appoint all new members, and the consensus again was to utilize the members that had served last time as long as they were willing and eligible to serve. And so this resolution contains all of the proposals that were sent to us in the meantime since that October meeting for the charter review commission to discuss. It also appoints the members of the last charter review commission who were able and willing to serve and adds a new, new member to that group, former councilmember Jim Griffith. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Scott.
Is it too late to request to add members to the committee? Because I'd like to make some recommendations.
Well, we would have to do an amendment on the floor.
Oh, okay. So, okay, never mind.
Any other? Councilmember Holman.
Did all the past members agree to do it again?
I believe so.
I'll turn to Brenda because she actually called all of them. We got quite a few of them, but there were a few who could not serve or were not willing to serve.
There were a total of four that are not serving that served before. Two of them have, no longer live in the city limits. Two were not able to serve this time.
And who are the four people we'll be, we are picking to fill those spots? Or are we?
There was, it was a larger group last time, so you still have a nine-member group by adding one more. And in talking with the mayor, kind of felt that was sufficient. So we didn't add four more. We just added one more to make it nine.
I think, now, do all those members represent each ward, or is, or is each ward represented in that nine?
I honestly can't remember the answer to that question.
Because I have heard comments from people, I think some of my colleagues have as well, that, you know, we had a charter review commission before. They gave us some recommendations just a few years ago. Maybe it might be a good idea to have some different or voices on that from the one we did before. Concerned that they might just send back the same recommendations that we had on a couple of the same questions we're asking them, so.
My button is not working.
Quit pushing it.
Okay.
It's stuck. That's what messes the...
Councilmember Wilson.
I want to make a amendment. Is this the proper time, Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Okay, let me read it off my, I had it written out, so I did it right. I would like to, I move that section five of resolution R dash one-eight, one-nine, dash six-six be amended to add subsection M reading. Considering, consider adding language to the charter to require a vote of the electorate prior to establishing a tax increment finance district that authorizes over five million dollars in project costs.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments about this? We're talking about the amendment now.
Yeah.
Any comments from councilmembers?
Phone again, though. Okay, hold on.
Did she ask you to read it again?
She wants me to read it again. Is that appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. Consider adding language to the charter to require a vote of the electorate prior to establishing a tax increment finance district that authorizes over five million dollars in project costs. This is just for the review.
Councilmember Castleberry.
I've got no problem with that as an amendment, since this is just something that we're talking about, and I think those discussions are very good. But I do have a question for the city attorney. Since TIFs are state statutes, can we be, can we do that?
The determination of whether or not the city can act differently from state law is really a, whether it's a matter of statewide concern or local concern. Here, we're not changing the Local Development Act. I think we're changing more of how we would, we would consent to use the Local Development Act, so I don't consider that to be an issue.
Before I take audience comment, I just want to make it clear to everyone that there are a number of items that the council suggested to send to the charter review committee. That, that doesn't mean that everybody's made a decision about that. That was an individual council's decision, council members' decision to do that. So it, because we're sending these forward does not mean that the council has all agreed to any or all of those amendments, that they are going forward as a, as a request of individual council members. I mean, I, there's some of them I would have put on there if they hadn't already been put on, but just wanted to make that clear. All right. Councilmember Wilson.
I actually was going to say that same thing, so. I just want to make sure that just by me voting to send something to review does not mean I support it. Just FYI.
Okay, at this time, I'll take public comment.
Somebody help him. Excuse me, Mayor, if I don't...
Okay. Harold, we don't want you sitting in one of those seats.
I tell you, you know, we got to do something about those damn seats.
They're bad.
I'm Harold Heiple. My wife and I live at twenty-eleven Morgan Drive. I deeply apologize for the fact that my hearing aids and the sound system up here lead me to have no idea about precisely what's being done. So let me just find, what I'm concerned about is the amendment to strike, I'm referring to
Okay.
The specific section from the thing, five J, to either strike it or amend it.
We haven't, the, the only thing that's been changed so far is we had a request for a new amendment to be added. We haven't struck anything.
Was the new amendment relating to that same section, J five? Okay.
No, it was a different.
I'll sit down and be quiet for a while.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Final comments from the council? Okay, the motion on the floor is to amend is to amend the resolution establishing a charter review commission and, and adding another issue to be considered. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to add language that requires a vote of the electorate for a TIF to be created, a TIF over five million dollars, has been passed unanimously.
Okay, this, this brings us back to the original resolution. Are there any more comments on the original resolution? All right, councilmember Scott.
Okay. So I'm new, as many of you know, and I'm wondering if I want to make an amendment to recommend some people to the charter review committee, if I could do that now, and then you guys would contact them, and they can either accept or reject. That's a question. I'm just wondering if that's okay. Can I do that right now?
I wouldn't want to put them in the resolution.
Okay.
If we don't know if they're willing to serve.
But you said that all of these people that are currently in the resolution have accepted?
Yes.
Okay, did I miss an email that was requesting, like, us to make recommendations? I missed that?
Well, I think, I think the, okay.
There was several emails sent that asked if you wanted to add specifically any items to the, to the review, and one email included a list of the members to see if you had any objections.
Objections, but no recommendations. Just wondering, again.
Well, what was posed was possibly whether or not to change them, so the, the members were sent out for your consideration.
Okay, so that's a missed opportunity on my part.
Yes, I would.
I mean, if you have suggestions, you could certainly turn those in, I guess, and...
But it would require another resolution to come forward to add them.
Okay. But I could, in the future, make a resolution to add members to the committee, then?
I don't know.
I'm not going to do that right now, but, yeah, I'm not doing it right now.
I think we want to.
Just getting clear, clarity.
Yes, you, you could do another resolution at the next meeting, I guess, requesting that, that people be added.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Castleberry.
The point's kind of moot now, but I was just going to make the clarification that whether it's this or any other citizens committees, Parks Board, Green Belt Commission, whatever, you know, we get an email from the mayor, these are people I'm considering. If you have any objections, let me know. Otherwise, it's going to be on the consent docket. So this is the same appointment process. Mayor appoints with council approval. This is just another citizen subcommittee, so at that point in time is when, you know.
So.
Yeah.
I'll give you that information.
Okay, this, this, are there any more questions from the council about the resolution to establish the charter review commission? Final comments from the audience?
Once again, I'm, I'm sorry. Is this final thing in any way expanding or diluting five J that's on the agenda? Okay, that's, she's just answering my question. Thank you.
Steve Ellis, six thirty-three Reed Avenue. I know that I want to suggest something that Harold will want to respond to, so you'll get your chance here in just a second, because I am going to suggest that you strike J from this resolution. We are basically reappointing the exact same charter commission council. They had a resolution last time. They agreed that we should consider removing citizen voting on utility rates. Almost unanimously, I believe there was one person who didn't vote against it. The council wisely, I think, decided that that shouldn't happen, appointing this charter review commission again. Appointing this Charter Review Commission again is tantamount to bringing this question before you, and what I want to suggest is that it would be appropriate for you to reject it out of hand right now. Norman votes on its utilities because there was some bad behavior in the past, which I think Harold will be able to tell us a little bit more about in the 1970s, when apparently the city council was funding some non-user service-related items with utility rates. What I want to suggest is that we're not past that danger yet. As a matter of fact, we're seeing some of that danger right now, because our current utility rates have already crept into non-service provision. So we know from the Raftellus report, and actually, if you look at the Charter Review Commission suggestions before on this item, what they're really talking about is using utility rates to pay for infrastructure for new development, and that is not service that's being provided to citizens who are current rate payers. So the way we operate right now, we're already subsidizing new development in contravention of our water and wastewater master plans, and removing citizen voting actually removes just about the only tool that citizens have for enforcing the principle that's enshrined in several of our master plans, that new development should pay its own way. I would also add that the way we're going forward with the stormwater utility from the discussion earlier today, it seems pretty clear that we're proposing that the smaller, poorer portions of our community subsidize the larger stormwater producer sections of our community, given the way the rates are set, and I can fill you in on the details if you want to talk to me. But given that we're in a situation now where we're already proposing utility rates, where people aren't just paying fee for service, we should maintain the option, and I would actually, I'm going to suggest that my fellow voters vote down any utility rate that doesn't allocate cost to where those costs are created. So based on that principle, and given that that's why we have water rate elections in the first place, getting rid of water rate elections, or even considering it at this point, is certainly something that looks pretty suspicious. My guess is that none of you want to go into the stormwater election when we've got a commission on charter review that's suggesting we just not go through that procedure anymore. People are going to want to vote. We should let them vote in the future. There's no point in setting up a committee that's going to recommend exactly what they did last time, which is getting rid of the vote. So I suggest that you strike Section J. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I couldn't appreciate that more. For those of you who don't know, there's nobody in town that has more personal knowledge or involvement in this whole affair about this charter provision than I have, starting with the very event that triggered the charter change that we live with today. Now, I asked to be included on this committee once I saw this item, 5J, simply because it affords an opportunity. And I will tell you now that if you look at what it says in 5J, that the charter provision requiring a vote of the people, that it be removed and add language to put an independent elected utilities board to set utility rates in its place. I will tell you that in our lifetimes, there's not a prayer that the voters in Norman will approve that, and that's not what I'm asking here. What I'm concerned about is that this not be stricken allowed us to take it further because, and my committee doesn't know this yet, because I haven't sprung it on anybody, although in a couple of council meetings, I have outlined this. And what I want to emphasize to you is that what will be presented is an alternative for the recommendation to retain... Retain the charter provision for voters to have to improve any increase in utility rates. Won't touch that a bit. And the recommendation will have a reasonable alternative to protect voters' pocketbooks from outrageous utility increases approved by five members of the city council. Now, if you'll allow that, if you'll just allow this thing to go forward, understanding that this... There's no way that this committee... I know them all. I haven't talked to any of them. There's no way that committee's going to come back and recommend J in its present language. But I think there's a really good opportunity here to preserve the right to vote on every utility increase, and yet we get away from this business that we fall into every 10 years by not doing anything, and suddenly we have to raise utility rates 40 or 50%. This is going to change the number of times that we could vote, and it's going to make it a lot easier, a lot cheaper, and a lot faster. And let me point something out here. These utility rates are... There are three enterprise funds, and I've been assuming that everybody was pretty acquainted with them. There's water, sewer, and garbage, and an enterprise fund must stand on its own. The money that it takes in is the money that it has to spend. It's not entitled to subsidies. Basically, that's... We've been operating on that basis for a long, long time. So what's taken in here, if it comes out, if it isn't attended to and voted on more than every... Once every 10 years, then you have this 40 and 50% problem going on. What we'll come back with, I feel pretty sure, and suggest is something that is... We're going to have more votes at less cost to the city, because if there's any vote, it will be during the regular city election, so there'll be no additional cost to the city. And it'll be elections determined by whether or not there needs to be a percentage increase in the respective enterprise fund's income, their rates. If the finance director certifies that for the past 18 months, the water fund needs a 1% increase, then that vote will be on the regular city election, and it'll be there as a matter of fact. You don't have to call special elections, which is things that city councils have been ducking for years. Nobody wanted to call a special election to set these things up. And so this is designed to alter and to maintain the rights of the voters to control what we're done. It's just a matter of making it faster and cheaper, and the alternative to keep our income on a level with the advances of inflation and other costs of development. So please, don't just strike this thing. Turn it over, recognizing that there's no way it's going to come back with a recommendation like what's written in here. Not because it wouldn't pass. It's just no chance it'll pass. But it serves as the vehicle for us to come back with a reasonable substitution that preserves the right to vote. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we still have the audience participating.
Hi, everyone. My name is Evan A. Dunn. I live at 1400 Garfield Avenue, and I really want to be on this team. I'm serious. I want to be on this team because I have that much respect for you, and I believe that these issues are that important. Steve Jobs died seven years ago, and he said a number of profound things that still resonate with me. I just finished this book, actually. There are only two books that I've read that brought me to tears, and this is one of them. He said about market research that, "No, I don't really do it because customers don't know what they want until we've shown them." And that is a very cynical, dismissive view of the customer, in our case, the citizen, and how well of a job we're doing communicating the needs to them.
Evan, are you going to relate this to the Charter Review Commission vote?
Of course, Madam Mayor. Whenever we're thinking about putting new people on the Charter Review Commission, what the purpose of the Charter Review Commission is, who's going to vote, when are the people going to vote, we also need to take into account that the people do not get the message the way that they should. If 20, 25% of our registered voters are turning out, we can't be accepted... We can't accept that. Thanks.
Thank you. Are you getting it to...
Hello, Rich Holshu. I was just curious about what the status of the city bus situation was like.
Would you identify yourself?
Rich Holshu.
I'm sorry.
Rich Holshu.
Right now, the audience comment has to pertain to the item we're discussing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you want to make comments, or you want to make comments about the bus situation, or talk to somebody after, you can wait for miscellaneous.
Okay. I didn't know we hadn't got there yet. I just arrived.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Scott.
I would like to maybe table this discussion until the... Or this vote until the next meeting, because of the conversation that we just had between Mr. Hypel and Mr. Ellis, as well as, I think, this email that I'm looking at, I found it, is not quite a recommend... Asking for recommendations, but more of just like a, we're, you know, from direction from council, we're calling these people, and it would be awkward, since you already made the calls. But Councilmember Hickman sent an email, and he asked... Or he said that... What did he say? He had some concerns about simply recalling them, and so that's when you replied to the email, saying that you'd already, you know, made these phone calls. If we wanted to start from scratch, then we would need to... We would need to postpone it, and I'm asking that we do that, that we postpone it until the next meeting. Should I motion to... Then I would like to make a motion to postpone this vote until the next council meeting. A little louder.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Comments? Yes.
I guess it's a question, are we tabling to add more people to the Charter Review Commission?
And then also maybe think about removing... I think it's the second item about the utility rates, because I've spoken to some people who are not pleased with us about that. I don't really mind moving these things forward to talk about and to have the Charter Review Committee look at, but it is... We clearly, as Mr. Ellis stated earlier, people are pretty furious about it, about the potential of having their right to vote taken away, especially with a stormwater vote coming up. So I do think it is wise for us to think about it. But yes, I would like to make recommendations to the Charter Review Committee primarily. Any other questions?
So you're both talking about amending, either changing or taking out or adding and changing members of the Charter Review Committee?
I'm not unhappy with the current list, but possibly adding. Does it have a cap? Is there a maximum? No? Okay. Excellent. Then, yes.
Table. Not why we're tabling or what we're going to table, so I mean, I think we need to stick to what we're talking about.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you. Councilmember Castleberry.
Did you have a comment? Motion on the floor is to table the issue of the Charter Review Commission. Is that table to...
Date certain.
Did you...
Yes.
Okay. To table the item until the next meeting, which is January 22nd.
22nd?
Councilwoman Scott, will you take a friendly amendment? I think our next meeting, January 22nd, is going to be talking about stormwater utility, and will probably be a 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning meeting, and this is maybe a long item also. So if we could... I personally don't think this is an urgent matter by any means, and I would ask that we go past that.
The February...
You know?
This is in February?
Yeah. Or maybe do a stay...
Maybe.
Because we will be long... We don't have time to talk about it, so I think it's...
I would accept your amendment.
To the last meeting in February?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The item on the floor now is to postpone to February 26th. 26th. Other comments? Oh, no, we have to vote on the amendment, don't we? Okay.
The postponement.
We have to vote on the amendment?
Postponement takes precedent.
Oh, and then we're going to vote on the amendment?
No, not at the pass.
Okay. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. But we're still voting to postpone it to the...
February 22nd.
22nd. Okay. That's what I asked.
Okay. All votes have been cast. The motion on the floor was to postpone the item until 26th. That motion passes unanimously.
Item 47 is an ordinance amending the city code to conform to the state regulations concerning the penalties, definition, and possession of marijuana. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Second.
I'd like to recognize Jeanne Snyder at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Jeanne Snyder, one of the Assistant City Attorneys, and this item, city staff has prepared amendments to the penalties and the definitions and of also the possession of marijuana ordinances, and I'll just go through those briefly with you. There'll be changes in two different chapters, Chapter 14 and Chapter 15. Chapter 14 is administrative payments to the court and appearances, and right now, if possession of marijuana falls under, you could pay your first offense, even though there was jail time attached, so we're removing that part. I do want to bring your attention to an item that has not been changed, and that's Part 5 of that same, Chapter 14, 310, is that when somebody receives a possession for marijuana citation, the ordinance allows them, if it's their first time offense, to pay at the counter or at the... Just with the clerk, instead of having to go before the judge. Now, they're always entitled, set a court date, and go before the judge, but this has always allowed folks just to come and pay the minimum fine of $200. The next amendment is to the definition of marijuana, and the main part of that that was included was that we said that marijuana shall not include the industrial hemp. It was defined in the state statute 2OS 3-402, just to clarify that that would not be part of a marijuana definition. Under the Chapter 15, under the penalty section, part... Was Part D, will be Part C, and then we're adding Part 2, is that staying in line with straight question 488, 788, a person convicted of 1543 cannot be punished of a fine not to exceed $400, and that was in state question 788, and we're just bringing that into line in our ordinances. We are removing the part, the possession of marijuana, where it was a penalty range of $50 to $750, up to 60 days in jail, or removing any jail time to be attached to the possession of marijuana. The remaining amendment or change is to... It is still unlawful in 15408. It is... Will still be unlawful for any person to knowingly or intentionally possess marijuana, unless the person has in their possession a current valid license issued by the state of Oklahoma for such possession. So while it may remain illegal to have the possession of marijuana unless you have a medical marijuana card. So those are just a few minor amendments, though, that make some pretty big changes in our ordinances. And any questions?
Councilmember Holman.
So for someone that does not have a medical marijuana card, who is in possession of marijuana, and they get stopped by the police for whatever reason, what is the threshold of which they would potentially be arrested? Is it possessing more than a medical marijuana cardholder could possess?
It would remain what our current law is. If you do not possess a medical marijuana card, it is still illegal to possess marijuana. So if you came in contact with the police, whether it's in your car or somewhere else, and you had possession of marijuana, you could be cited for the illegal possession of marijuana, regardless of the amount.
Sited, but I mean arrested, taken to jail?
They will not be taken to jail, and in fact, our current... How we currently handle that, we call it a sign and go, where they... we call it a sign and go, where they are not arrested and taken to jail or brought to the court, to the police department to post a bond. Sign and go means exactly that. They issued the citation, they sign it, they take their copy, and they're released, unless there's a corresponding, another charge that would be a jailable offense.
Okay. And the maximum fine of $400, is that the lowest maximum we are, as a governing body, that we would be allowed to, we can't make the fine zero, is that the way?
It says up to $400. The fine, I think, well, actually, not to exceed $400, I believe, is what the state law says. So we currently always have in all of our penalties, a penalty range of, say, $50 to $750, or traffic violations are $50 to $200. So anywhere within that range, the court can recommend that or assess that type of fine. All State Question 788 said was up to a fine of $400. Currently, we're up to $750, and it is rare to assess more than $200.
Or is the city of Norman required by law to have any fine at all? Do we have to fine people for possession of marijuana? Whether it's $5 or $400?
Well, following State Question 78, my interpretation, it did not give us a penalty range, which is a normal penalty when you see in statutes ordinances, like I said, $50 to $750. It said up to a maximum of $40, so I suppose we could do anywhere between 0 and 400. I don't see a court, a judge assessing 0 for a fine, but I suppose it's possible, but that would be up to the judge. That's, we have, you could fine them and suspend fines, we've done that in the past, but we've always had a penalty range, and this is just a little bit different.
So this, the city council here would have the authority to say, well, in Norman, our maximum, 788 passed by a lot, people in Norman clearly support this issue. Could we say the maximum fine in Norman is going to be $25 if we wanted to? Are we illegally allowed?
We are following what State Question 788 specified, and that was up to $400.
Okay.
I mean, that is what the 788 directed us to do, directed the state to do, and that's what the voters voted on, was up to a maximum of $400.
I'm mainly just wondering if this governing body has the authority to go further, or to be less restrictive or more friendly than the state law, even if we wanted to.
Because it says up to $400, that the range is up to $400, so it would give the judge, the court, the authority to assess anywhere from 0 to $400. I don't believe the city council is able to direct a court or a judge on how they want to specify the fines.
Right, yeah, I wouldn't suggest that, just that in our city ordinances, like we're doing right now, lowering the penalty to a maximum of 400 from 750, that we would have the authority to change it to whatever we wanted to, is what I, if we're superseded by state or federal law on, we can't, the city council in Norman can't make marijuana possession legal, is the way I understand it.
No, we're following what voters of 788, yes, sir. It's what the state law authorizes, is up to $400.
Well, I definitely would, I thank you very much, Jeanne. I would encourage us as a council to, even if we pass this tonight, to continue thinking about this issue and how we might be able to go further in the future. And I would make one more note, too, after discussing Councilmember Scott and Catherine Walker, City Attorney, the way I understand it, this ordinance does not address actual paraphernalia either. So that'll be a separate issue that the city council needs to clarify, that drug paraphernalia is something that has, in my opinion, something that has drugs in it.
Right, and I have started looking at the possession of marijuana, paraphernalia in our city ordinance, in the state statute, and actually, our intern has done, spent a couple of days looking at cities in Oklahoma and across the country about how it is handled, paraphernalia. We were at this point just focusing on what State Question 788 directed, and paraphernalia was not mentioned in that State Question or in the new state law, but we'll be happy to go ahead and look at, if there is any amendments to the possession of paraphernalia. But you have to keep in mind, too, there's other drugs that use paraphernalia, so we need to be.
Yeah, I would suggest that it's paraphernalia if there is an illegal substance of any kind. The way I understood it, too, from the email, was that even a medical marijuana cardholder, it doesn't clarify that if they're using a pipe to smoke their medical marijuana, that pipe could still be considered drug paraphernalia, even though they have a license. I think we definitely need to clarify that.
I agree, Councilmember Holman, and I looked at that a little bit today, that perhaps there'd be an exemption for a medical marijuana cardholder. Or even, I wanted to look even further into our growers and processors, because when I was reading over a paraphernalia ordinance, it does talk about
Cultivating.
Objects or whatever would be used in the cultivation or processing, so that's something that needs to be looked at. I didn't find, I found, didn't find in the state statute, has not been changed yet, kind of waiting to see what's going to happen with the legislature. I think there's things being brought forward. Our paraphernalia ordinance mentions the Controlled Substance Act, that's not been amended by the state law, so I'm wondering what's going to happen next legislative session, but we've already started looking into that. We're just wanting to get cleaned up on what State Question 788 required.
I appreciate your work on that and the rest of staff, and I just would encourage my colleagues to think about that we need to clarify those things. Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Councilmember, oh, Catherine. No, it's been covered. All right. Okay. Councilmember Scott.
Mine's just sort of a follow-up on Councilmember Holman's. I think the point of decriminalization and decriminalizing ordinances is to basically not give any incentive to arrest people for a plant, something that's not even really a drug, something that is, people use to medicate. So if we do have the opportunity, I mean, we are authorized to, I guess, fine up to $400, and if that's what we are voting on tonight, I would think that we'd be able to lower it. And if that's what, if we're not able to, okay, but is it something we could revisit?
Yes, Councilmember, we could revisit that, but it was my understanding that we wanted to follow and be in line with State Question 788, and that was the direction that I took, and so by reading that, that gave us our direction of the maximum.
I absolutely appreciate that. I'm just thinking, like, again, not to, I don't think there should be any incentive to fine somebody for having medicine on them. That is just my opinion.
Right, and if they hold a medical marijuana card, they wouldn't even be issued a citation. There'd be an opportunity for the fine.
Again, with decriminalizing, we know that people who don't have a medical marijuana card carry marijuana. That's just the fact, and so, that's just my opinion.
Nobody else? We haven't had, Councilmember Hickman.
I just want to clarify, is the $400 fine that we're talking about tonight, is that for somebody who has a medical marijuana card?
No, if a person is in possession of a medical marijuana card, it would not even be issued the citation, and there's even, on the medical marijuana website, there's a way, if you have your license number, that somebody could, actually, you can put on the website and check to make sure that they do have a medical card. But my understanding, I've seen one of the cards, it's about like a driver's license or a credit card size, so I'm guessing that most everybody who has a medical marijuana license will always keep it on their person. They'll just show it to the police officer they came in contact with, and that would be it.
Well, I guess, let me clarify my question. Sometimes when you're driving your car, you might have ran out real quick and forgot your driver's license, or your insurance verification deal. If you get pulled over, you'll get a ticket still, and then you can maybe go and show, hey, here's my deal, my verification form, and then it gets dismissed. You might have to pay costs or something like that. I guess what I'm trying to understand from this conversation is the $400, is that for the person who has a medical marijuana card but forgot it? Or is that, are we just changing the fine for somebody who has marijuana but doesn't have a prescription card in any form or fashion?
That's correct. If somebody would receive a citation and they didn't have their card on them, and they somehow couldn't access the website, or, I believe that license number's pretty long, so it's not something you can remember. If they would bring that, we will dismiss that without any court cost, because they would be legally able to possess that.
That's what I wanted to clarify, and for the, for all of council and anybody watching at home, that if you have a, if you legally have a medical marijuana card, and you're like somebody else who forgets their insurance verification form, and you happen to get pulled over and get the ticket written at that time, what you're saying is our policy will be, when you come in and show us that you have the medical marijuana card, and it was valid at the time of your ticket, that that will be dismissed with no cost, no charges.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions or make comments. Final council comments? Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. All votes have been cast. To approve the ordinance upon second reading, passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously. Item 48 is miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to five minutes or less. Okay, we're going to let this gentleman up front go first, and then.
Holshu. In case you didn't remember, I was curious about the bus situation. I understand that the city of Norman was supposedly taking over the city bus routes. I was kind of curious what the status of that was.
If you want to stay afterwards, somebody will visit with you. Right now, there's just ongoing discussions between the city and the university, so nothing has happened yet. It will be a long process. It will take a long time.
Thank you.
At the earliest, yeah. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Alan Hickey. Excuse me, I'm one of the many faces of the Sooner Swim Club, and we're still waiting on our pool and breaking ground. And I ran some numbers this morning, and voting age associated with the swim club numbers right at about 900 people, and we're really wanting to break ground on this pool. You know, it's really a big concern. We're out at OU, the campus, right now, and the university and the staff are doing everything in their power, but since the holidays, that pool has been shut down about 90% of the time. It's old. You know, we need a place to practice. There's very few places to go elsewhere in the area. We've thankfully been able to use the Y a few times, although it's not perfect conditions for competitive swimming, but we're really interested in breaking ground for this pool. It's really important to a lot of people of Norman. Thank you.
We know that. We're hoping to have some information for you in the next couple of weeks.
Super, thank you.
Hey, everyone. Again, my name is Evan A. Dunn. I live at 1400 Garfield Avenue. I've got this book again. Steve Jobs was adopted, and he was adopted by a family out in Southern California, there in Silicon Valley, and I think, like all of us, we're all products of where we were born, when we were born, to whom we were born. And Steve Jobs had to move to a different school because he was being bullied and he was being outcasted, so his family saved up some money and made a sacrifice to give him a better education and to give him better opportunities. And this is what he said after they had moved to this new district. That when I moved here, these corners were still orchards, Steve pointed out, as we walked in front of his old house. The guy who lived right there taught me how to be a good, organic gardener and how to compost. He grew everything to perfection. I never had better food in my life. That's when I began to appreciate. I mention this because I'm going to be on the ballot, but I don't want to win, really. I'll do the job. I'll be a sustainability director. We want to fill that position. I can do it. Channel 19 puts people to sleep, but it informs them a little bit. We can change that. The urban forestry, I can be a part of that. Being a fill-in for Susan, the city planner, those, the tedium of those jobs, I can put in 18-hour days. This is what I'm thinking about for the majority of my time, the things, the way that we can perfect our school system, ways that we can enhance the education, ways that we can connect rural Norman with the urban intelligentsia, with the suburban intelligentsia. It sounds simple, and it sounds petty, but enhancing our efficiency, changing our homes to become energy producers, carbon sequesterators, it flips the script, and the people who vilify the oil companies and all of the frackers, they just make that divide harder to bridge, and when that happens, they go into their camps, they dig in their heels, and they start lobbying, and people get caught up in this tunnel vision, parochial view of the dynamics that our country exists in, and we have to think bigger. Norman can be a leader in the community. It can bridge those gaps, and it can turn what we see as being a burden into something that enables us to compete better with China. These countries that don't have access to the soil and the oil that we do are, they're not telling us, but they are thinking it, that you are wasteful, you are decadent, and we have to recognize the integral role that oil history and understanding its power and all that we do can have on future generations. It's absolutely integral that we appreciate it and revere it and appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, could the firm of Ellison, Hypal, propose a little change in the language of this particular section?
Does this mean you get 10 minutes?
We'll give you in writing what's about to be said.
And we won't take 10, we promise. So we were just discussing this in the back, and we were going to suggest as some language for J. under the resolution, Section 5, consider retaining Article 16, Section 2 of the charter, requiring a vote of the electorate prior to increasing city utility rates, and adding language to specify the timing and the extent of such votes. So the charter commission's charge would be to come up with a method through which we can get votes for utility rates on the city election date in a fairly automatic way with a procedure that looks at what the needs of the utilities are, and I would add, I don't know if Harold will agree with this, take into account current versus future needs and all the things that we look at when we've done our master planning. So.
So if you generally.
We'll stand arm-in-arm with that.
What, Mayor?
It would be better if you were both in overalls.
I want everyone to note my fancy low-back overalls tonight, too, so.
I wanna plead the fifth on that.
My suggestion is that you send that to me or to Brenda and that we be able to send it out to all the council members to see if they're willing to put that on.
Thank you.
Make that part of the agenda. Thank you.
Miracles do happen. That was amazing. I'm Scott Martin, Norman Chamber of Commerce, one fifteen East Gray Street. Based on your conversation you had in your council conference and also earlier this evening in tonight's meeting about citizen input, I wanted to share with you, in addition to the email I sent you earlier this afternoon, I wanted to share that with you this evening and also those in attendance that might be watching, because I think it's important that we have a lively discussion about citizen input on all things that are taking place throughout our community. And so, I wanted to share with you a statement that I sent to you earlier via email. This says, "The Norman Chamber of Commerce strongly encourages the Norman City Council to utilize a citizen search committee in the hiring of a new city manager." Caveat, we're not looking to get rid of Mary anytime soon, she's doing great. Historically, this has been the practice adopted by previous councils and provides a method of meaningful input from the general public as the council considers who will be Norman's next city manager. A citizen search committee helps open the process and engages thoughtful citizens in this important discussion or decision. While this would have been advisable at the beginning of the process, it's not too late to do the right thing and create such a committee to help council navigate the many applicants that will apply. Openness, transparency, and citizen involvement are hallmarks of good government. The chamber can't think of a better time for you to show our community you're committed to these ideas. Thank you.
Good evening, council and Madam Mayor. My name's Rinden Chambers, I live in Norman. I just like to, I like kinda what Councilman Holman had to say on that charter commission, probably appointing the same people that did the last one's probably gonna give you the same results typically, I find. People don't change their minds much and whatever they saw last time, they're probably gonna see again. So, probably getting some new people, I can see how that would be beneficial. Maybe harder and harder to get ahold of people and convince people to wanna join that. Might take a little more groundwork, but that's why you guys were elected. Secondly, with the, within the whole marijuana issue that was brought up as well, just as a citizen, I'd like to state that I think the, it is a drug. I think that some fine doesn't need to be assessed, I don't know, four hundred, you know, I think we could honestly, as in Norman, say, hey, a hundred bucks, cost of a OZ or something. They could easily put that as the fine and within Norman, Norman area, that would still be with under the state law, four hundred, correct? So, I, you know, just a suggestion, I'm not saying you guys have to do that. And then, I just, you know, when we're talking about how they got pulled over with or without the license, I think it's very much just like a conceal and carry license. If you don't have it on you, you get in trouble. If you're carrying a gun, you don't have your conceal and carry, you will lose your gun, you'll lose your license. I would think marijuana would be very similar, because it's still a drug, it still can impair vision or, you know, impair, you know, impair you some. And that's all. I just tell you guys thanks and let my opinion be heard. Thanks.
All right, since only seven forty-five and we, that means I got three hours here. First of all, I wanna talk a little bit about the makeup of the citizens oversight committee, I mean, the charter review committee. Although these are slated to be the same people, they're not the same questions. So, you're not gonna get the same result, you're not asking the same questions. This is a totally expanded deal. So, from that standpoint, I think whoever gets appointed to the committee needs to be people that are qualified. And sometimes, if you're qualified, you're qualified. I have no problem with expanding it, putting other people on there, but I think, understanding that all these people are former council members, legislators, people that understand the charter, some legal stuff and have some background of why we've done that, and that's why they were selected. Regarding the, the pool, I'll maybe talking out of line, but I'm gonna go ahead and expand. Had it not snowed last week, we would have had it on tonight's agenda. Okay? We could not get the memorandum understanding consigned by OU and Department of Health because they were closed Thursday, Friday. So, I feel strongly that next meeting, it will be on there, we will have a contract for the land and we can start moving dirt. So, now, that, that being said, Winston Churchill once said, "A politician can tell you what's gonna happen in the future and then he can tell you why it didn't happen also." So, with that caveat, I think that goes for economics and finance, stockbrokers and that kinda stuff. Everybody can predict the future and tell you why it didn't happen. I want, do wanna talk a little bit about this, section J. I think we, in a roundabout way, got the exact same thing that the law firm of Hyple and Ellis got to. This was my suggestion and I was, and so, part of that, if you read that, and, it talked about a election commission, okay? And the idea on this was, and I stole this from Councilman Hyple, or former council member Hyple, many years ago, and I've talked about this for years. I really believe that the structure of our utility rates need to be reviewed every twelve months, eighteen months, something of that type of structure. And so, basically what you guys suggested is what we were going to do. And wanted to have the charter review commission look at, do we have a board that's appointed by the council or elected by the electorate to, their only, their sole function is to look at utility rates. They don't have to worry about whether we're doing tips or road projects or Norman Forward or marijuana issues or anything like this. That's the sole thing they would do and they would look at them and hopefully on a rotating basis, you'd look at water one year and so that type of thing. And part of that discussion was gonna be, okay, is this utility board make a recommendation for people to vote on? Or does the board vote on it? And that was going to be what would go, after that discussion, that was gonna be what would go to the ballot. And so, I think, I believe Councilman Hyple's correct, that it would not pass if it was gonna take away the right to vote. Although I do think that passed back in nineteen seventy-four. And so, I'm personally not sure if forty-five years later, it wouldn't be a bad idea to get it reaffirmed, that people still want that right to vote. Now, us putting it on the ballot is not us saying we agree that you should take away the right to vote. That would be the citizens of Norman determining whether they still wanted that right or not. And so, through this process, this is really looking at what is the best way to look at our utility rates going forward and so that we don't have these, every ten years, these big rate increases. And so, you go through and if, if, if the committee says, "No, this is not something that the citizens should vote on as far as the committee," then let's appoint a citizens' committee. I don't really care what the structure is, that's why I'm open for the discussion, that's why I wanted to put it on here to have the charter review committee discuss it. And if it has, if it has to be something that's voted on, then that's why it needs to go to charter review, so that be, the citizens would vote on it to put in the charter. But the idea basically is, hey, we look at, we look at the water fund. Is it sustainable for the next three years? We look at what we think the rates are gonna be, what the income coming in, what the expenses are gonna be, and they look at it and say, you know what? We need a two percent rate increase. And then, next year you go to sanitation, you say, no, it's fine, we'll skip it. And the next year you go to sewer and say, okay, it needs a three percent rate increase because the cost of something went up. And it's a regularly scheduled deal, we have city elections every single year. And so, whenever we have that, or you do it every three years, when you have the mayor's election, you have a citywide election. So, if you wanna schedule it, that they'll review these rates and that, that's the concept. That's all that's being discussed. And I'm open to however we wanna do that, but I don't wanna change that too much, council members. If we can have that discussion, I think that's gonna be healthy. I'm not really concerned about the outcome. I'm more concerned about the process and having a way that we can go to citizens every once in a while, more often with utility rate increases as opposed to saying, well, you know, it's been ten years since the last time we asked you for one and we need to raise it forty or fifty percent. We're gonna be out of water next year or our sanitation rates, our tipping fees went up. Okay, so we're losing money on every single time we pick up your trash. Yeah, people don't wanna vote on that. We'll, we'll wait another couple of years. And so, I think this is something that if you're gonna give people the right to vote, then make them vote. I, I think we should not be scared of voter fatigue. I think the citizens of Norman said they wanna vote on stuff. They wanna vote on utility rate increases, then let's make them vote on rate increases so that we can be financially solvent and have a plan going forward. I think it's a lot easier for people, especially if you're on fixed income or if you're retired or to have a two or three percent increase in your utility bills every couple of years and just have a forty percent increase every five or six years. And it would help us with our strategic long-term water supply plan, it'll help us with sanitation. And so, that was the gist of, of what that was in there. And that's why it said to possibly remove and adding the electoral, the, the commission on there. So, I hope we do not take that out, because I really think that's something that the charter review commission should look at. And, and for us to kill it right now before we even have a discussion, I think is counterproductive to, you know, let's have dialogue. We all talk about, we wanna have dialogue, we wanna talk about stuff. And for us to come in and say, we're not even gonna talk about it. I think something like that is, is not wise. And so, I hope that when we talk about this and in the February, that we can go ahead and keep that on there. If we wanna tweak it a little bit, I'm fine with it, wording doesn't really matter to me. I'm just more concerned that we go through the process. Keep in mind, the charter review commission is open meetings, they will have quarterly public meetings. So, this is not a star chamber coming up with us, this is very, a lot of public input. We want public input, because these are very important things that affect the charter, which is basically our governing document, and people are gonna vote on it. This is not gonna be stuff the council is gonna come up with. So, there needs to be some consensus on it. Charter changes are, are major changes. You know, whether we're talking, we're also, the other things kinda gloss on there, we're talking about changing the terms of elections, we're talking about when to swear people in. You know, do we start having November elections? I would like for all our elections to be in November instead of having a February election. These are the things that we're gonna look at and chart and, and talk about. And so, I just wanna make those few comments as we go through there and, and I'll yield the rest of my three hours to council meeting.
I'll take all that, I'm a lawyer, so I can talk. First of all, I just wanna say, for all the folks out there, and I wanna ask the city manager, make this request, on the senior center and the indoor aquatic center, we've been fighting long and hard to get that land secured and I'd like to have an update presented to council next Tuesday at the study session, if we could add that to that agenda item so that we could have that update. I know Mr. Castleberry, our Councilor Castleberry popped a little surprise out there on where we think we're going, but at least that would give us a chance to have a mid, mid-cycle update to the, to the public before the next council meeting on the twenty-second, that way everybody could know. I am also very hopeful and I think we are getting close in finally getting something done with the departmental health and with OU, but there's always the but. I just wanna make a few quick announcements tomorrow morning. Coffee, yeah, the ninth, was that tomorrow, was that Thursday? Yeah, tomorrow, tomorrow morning. Confusing my days, it's a new year, I'm kinda already off, eighteenth to nineteenth, whatever. Coffee with a cop at Jam here in historic downtown on Main Street, starting at seven thirty AM. You're all invited, please come down, visit with our officers, learn a little bit about our community-oriented policing, our department chief Humphrey over there, they do a great job. This Friday night also is Art Walk. If you've never been to Art Walk, please come down to Art Walk, shop local and support our local merchants here in historic downtown also. And if you've been to Art Walk, well, you know it's a wonderful event and a great time to be down in Norman, so that is this Friday night. And then, another last announcement will be on next Tuesday, the fifteenth. I'm the chair of the Community Planning and Transportation Committee and we postponed our December meeting to the fifteenth. It's at four o'clock here at City Hall. And two items on the agenda that we will be discussing is an incentive program for low-impact development. So, we've also been talking about stormwater and this is a way for us to try to enhance how development occurs in our community in a smart way, utilizing low-impact development best practices, and we'll be talking about that. And also, talking about affordable housing in our community, the best way to go about and how we are doing as a community in providing affordable housing for all of our residents. So, if you're interested in those two topics, I encourage you to attend the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting at four o'clock on the fifteenth. Otherwise, just wanna say happy new year to everybody. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and for everybody watching at home. Have a good evening.
I wanna say, good job, Councilmember Scott, on your pushing for a thing and, and kinda figuring it out. I'm just proud of you, good girl. And I don't have a whole lot, except for we are going to have a meeting with my word, I do it every second Saturday. I've been doing that since before I even got on council. And so, this Saturday at Thunderbird Baptist Church across from Clear Bay on Highway nine at ten thirty AM, we will be meeting. I think it'll be an important meeting to come to, because I would like to get your feedback on stormwater, because that's a very important topic in our ward and our community. So, I really wanna hear what you have to say for those listening on our non-ability to get that out in Ward Five, so, on TV. So, y'all have a good day and I'm passing this down the dais.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Wilson. Just a couple announcements, there are two events on January seventeenth that I wanted to point out. There's lots of talk of bond issues, we talked a lot about stormwater tonight and we had the first reading of the transportation bond. We also have an education bond on February twelfth and the East Side Business Association at their meeting on Thursday, January seventeenth at nine AM at the East Branch Library. We'll have a presentation from Superintendent Nick Millarino and Mr. O'Leary from Public Works to explain and answer your questions on both of those bonds. And then, later that night, which we will now have to miss because of our special session, is the chili supper, the benefit dinner with Norman Police Department. That's five thirty to seven thirty on Thursday, the seventeenth. It's five dollars, all-you-can-eat chili. Rusty's Custard Factory is usually there as well and the benefits go to the Cleveland County Christmas store. So, I try to never miss that event. Maybe I'll, what do you guys think? Should we all just get some chili and chow on that while talking stormwater? Vegetarian chili. And then, I actually chair the Oversight Committee and we are meeting this Thursday. And one of the items on our agenda is our continued conversation about the noise ordinance, which I think is a very important thing to be discussing right now as we are in a new year and before we know it, it'll be warm outside, we'll have a lot of outdoor music going on, which we just approved or are on the path to approving our first agro wedding venue. So, I think we need to have those safeguards in place to protect our residents. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming out here tonight and everybody watching at home. Those of you that got up and spoke, I know very well how difficult that can be. It's getting up in front of everybody and talking about issues that are important to you can be difficult sometimes, but I appreciate you doing so. We've got a lot of big decisions that we're trying to make here on the city council and we need more people to tell us how you feel about them. Some of the big issues coming up that have been mentioned are the transportation bond. There are three big projects in that package for Ward Seven, one of which is a combined stormwater project that would address the number-one flooding problem in Ward Seven, which as at Lindsay and Elm Street, many of you may be familiar with it. It also addresses the number-one transportation project in Ward Seven, which would be Jenkins Avenue, adding bike lanes and continuous sidewalks, ADA accessibility, things like that. So, we're gonna be having those conversations as we voted tonight to move that forward, to put it on the ballot. I guess we'll make a final vote on the twenty-eighth, but, or the next twenty-sixth, twenty-second. So, we're gonna be continuing to have those discussions over the next few weeks and of course, leading up to the election in April. But stormwater is a big one, the biggest one in my opinion. And we've got these three big Norman Forward projects that we're trying to get through, the Aquatic Center, the Senior Center and the indoor multi-sport facility. All three of these facilities are gonna be right next to each other as we envision it anyway. So, we are all just kinda sitting here on pins and needles, waiting for this agreement to get through here and it's unfortunate that the weather. to get through here and it's unfortunate that the weather happened last week and we couldn't get it done then. But I also want to mention too, that when I first got elected to city council almost six years ago, I probably don't, I don't think I could have imagined that I would today have the opportunity to vote on an issue like decriminalization of marijuana. Many people would have thought Oklahoma would be the last state to ever address anything like that. And I didn't necessarily believe that based on Oklahoma's history and some of the politics that we've seen in Oklahoma's history before. I didn't think we'd be the last one. I think a lot of Oklahomans don't like having the government being too overbearing and telling us what to do all the time. So I'm not so surprised that State Question 788 passed the way it did. But I was really, really excited and very proud, being from Norman, to have had the opportunity tonight to vote on changing our ordinances like we did. I think we can go further, I'm looking forward to doing that. And other than that, I just look forward to seeing everybody maybe at Art Walk this week or at some other community events that are coming up and continuing to have these discussions about how we can make Norman better. Thank you.
Hello, thank you all so much for coming and sticking around. This is one of our, this is like a record short meeting, I think, for us since I've been on council anyway. And thank you to my fellow council members and happy new year, everyone. So Ward 8 will be having its next ward meeting on the 27th of this month of January at the same place, Fire Station 7, the one over by the YMCA on the north side, from 1:30 to 3:00. For those of you who are watching at home, please attend. We will be get, we will still be discussing stormwater. We're going to discuss it until y'all vote on something and it passes. So we're just going to keep pushing it and pushing it. I'm really, really, really pleased with the state for passing 788. I'm really pleased with us and our decriminalization ordinance, like Councilmember Holman said, I think we can take it. We can take the fines even lower. I think $400 is a little excessive personally, but that's just because I don't have it on hand at any given time for anything, especially like my tags, right, for my car. Anyway, it's a personal problem. Next week begins my last semester of my master's program at OU, my Master's of Public Administration. I have told Carrie Evenson that I will commit an extra hour and a half on campus on Mondays and Wednesdays to continue having this conversation about stormwater and encouraging people on campus, young people like myself, like most of us on council, to get out there and vote for stormwater. When we were looking at the survey results earlier, there was a very small portion of people who were between the ages of 18 and 24, and if you guys don't know, I'm 24, and so that's, that's my little section, we were the smallest one. 4%, 3.99% of us took the survey. And so people like me are not paying attention. And so I'm going to commit that time on Mondays and Wednesdays, tabling somewhere on campus. Whoever would like to join me, I'll be there every Monday and Wednesday, from 5:00 to 6:30 until class starts, Monday and Wednesday, asking people to vote for stormwater, having these conversations. I have a megaphone I bought at Dillard's on sale. I am not above shouting at people to vote yes on stormwater and just having the, having them tell me to go away. I'm not above that or below that. Anyway, I'm also getting over an illness, I don't know if you can hear the nasaliness. So anyway, thank you all again for sticking with us and I hope to see you again soon.
Just a quick update on Legacy Park, on the pond. Parks and Recreation started draining it today and that's going to enable them to complete some maintenance items and also to install what we've referred to as the permanent wildlife safety ramps. Is that, is that good news? Anyway, there'll be a temporary fence placed around the area for safety purposes and will be, you know, it's expected to be completed and the pond refilled early March. And so we're really looking forward to this. And I, a big shout out to Parks and Recreation, Judd Foster and his staff for, for seeing this through. I think everybody is going to be really pleased with the outcome of this. Another piece of good news, preliminary January sales taxes. We don't have all the complete info yet from the tax commission, but it is on the positive side. This is for November sales and we're, we have a 3.93% increase in our sales tax over a year ago. And so that brings us to a year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date, which would be July 1 to now, of a 3.21% increase. And so while I don't want to go out and celebrate, you know, too quickly about that, but it does, you know, it's much better than being on the other side of 2%, which is what's projected for our increase this year. So we are on the positive side and we hope that continues and maybe some of those shop local campaigns from the chamber and other entities have helped that and we'll see what our sales tax receipts are next month. That's it.
Good thing. I'm just going to make a couple of comments about this whole process of the Charter Review Committee. I think it's a wonderful process that we use. Through, over the last few months, the council has brought up a number of things. It started when we kind, I think when we talked about the city attorney and how the city attorney was appointed and hired. And then council members continued to say, well, we've talked about maybe lengthening the terms of council members and the mayor, how about we have the Charter Review Committee look at that. And so a number of issues came from different council members. And I am personally, I am committed to see that every council member has their opportunity to get what they want the Charter Review Committee to look at. If we're going to call these people back and ask them to help us again, then I think everybody needs to bring up what, what they would like to have looked at. It doesn't mean we all agree with every one of them. I don't, I agree with some of them, I wouldn't put some of them on there, but they're important to individual council members, so I hope we end up not taking any of them off. I also would like to clarify, we kind of talked about it a little bit in terms of the appointment of the committee. At the meeting where it was discussed, I understood council saying, and I think some of the staff did, that we would, we would call back the committee that, that we had. And so the committee, what we always do is check with people to see if they're interested before we put them on an agenda and their names were, were sent out. I hear what everybody's saying, I'm glad we, we postponed until February and we can talk about it some more. But I would strongly recommend that we leave the people that are already on, on it and if we want to add some people, we can, we can do that. So with that said, I'm glad to be letting everybody out at 8:15. Thank you all.